I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Brittany, will you help us?
Chair, just here.
Here.
March 10.
Here.
Don't worry.
Here.
Here.
Tom, that is the town manager. And Robert Bishop is excuse.
He is excuse, yep. Thank you. Minutes for February 7th, 2022.
Make a motion, we approve the minutes from February 7th, 2022.
Do a second.
I'll second.
Motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Minutes for February 14th.
Make a motion, we approve the minutes from February 14th, 2022.
Do a second.
I'll second.
Motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Movement number five, public address to the board. This is the time when the public may address the board on any item listed on the meeting's agenda or on any issue or matter of the town. If you intend on addressing the board at this time, we ask that you do the following. Please identify yourself by name, address, what company, institution you represent. The public address to the board segment will last no longer than 30 minutes. Please make your comments concise and try not to repeat statements made by others. Please address your comments to the board chair. Discussion or debate on any issue may not take place at this time. The chair that does the main may answer questions on procedural matters. Please be cordial and respectful of others. If anyone wishes to be recognized when the board discusses an agenda, please make that request at this time. The board chair may grant this request and address comments to the board chair. Be concise. And also, we're meeting in person, making this meeting available via Zoom for the convenience of the public. Since we're meeting in person, we will not be responsible for any technical difficulties. So if you'd like to be sure of participating, please try to attend in person. Is there anyone wishing to address the board? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Allison Peters, Representative to CRA. And I'm just here for item 8 on the agenda.
Okay. Great, thank you, Allison.
And I'm Glenn Garvey, and I am here for item 9.
Okay, great, thanks, Mr. Garvey. And is there anyone online?
Hi, my name is Christine Ferrari, and I'm from Berkshire County. I'm the Down Syndrome Family Group Advisor, and I'm here just to address the buddy walk coming up in September.
Okay, excellent, thank you. And in lieu to number six, appointment ratifications. Mr. Hutchinson.
We have two. The first is Tim Decker, who works the leaf and brush pile. You may remember appointing him last year. Last year, he had a one-year appointment, but he likes the job, and everybody over there likes him. And so, we would like to start a position as permanent, part-time, seasonal, transfer station laborer. The leaf and brush pile is now in the transfer station budget. So that's what we're calling it, as opposed to high-weighted work. Effective April 4th, this is a week from today, 2022.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I ask that the point to Decker as permanent, part-time, seasonal, transfer station laborer effective April 4th, 2022.
Do a second.
I'll second.
Motion, a second, any discussion? Mr. Boyce.
Hearing none. Tim. It means that he's employed a year-round, but we don't have the brush pile open the year-round. I'm not sure I understand what you mean.
Yes, it is not a year-round position. It is a seasonal position. The season runs from April through November. So it is a long season.
In November, huh?
Yeah. So, yeah. We don't, we, I don't believe we brought him back to the Christmas trees.
I guess we did. He took the words right out of my mouth. What about the Christmas thing? He just tempered it himself, kind of.
Yeah, I think there's not nearly so much call for event attended at that point.
Okay, well done.
Motion, a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Motion carries. Next one for Hunter Conley. Mr. Hutchinson.
Yes, Hunter Conley was brought in to assist while one of our highway crew was recuperated from an injury. We've learned that that recuperation is going to take an extra month and are asking for a month's extension on Mr. Conley's position.
Great, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, we appoint Hunter Conley as Highway Equipment Operator effective April 1st, 2022 through... Actually, I'm going to withhold the motion. I have a couple of questions before I make my motion. Tom, would it be worse? We never hire a mechanic, correct?
Right.
Would it be worse? Can we put it to be determined by the town manager an end date on this? We have the salary available, and we're guessing that he'll be back in a month. Could we leave it out, leave it open-ended to be determined by you? If in three weeks, if it's going to be another month or anything? I mean, I'm sure Bud has enough work for Hunter. If we needed him to stay on, then just leave it open-ended?
In any case, I would suggest then June 30th.
Okay, all right. I'm going to actually make the different motion then. I'll make a motion, we appoint Hunter Conley as Highway Equipment Operator effective April 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2022.
Do a second?
I'll second.
Motion, a second, any discussion?
Is there any possibility of this hire becoming a worker at the transfer station when his position expires at the town garage?
I don't know. That is certainly less than a full-time position at this point. And our plan is to offer that position first to the incumbent.
The existing.
The operator. Yeah.
Yeah, good. I mean, the guy that's working for Cassell right now.
Yes. We would like to offer.
Why, may I say this? I know the guy, because I go over there once a month and talk. You're not going to find a better attendant for the guy.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, that is our.
I mean, if I were to put a good word in for him, he's extremely courteous and helpful to the customers or consumers, whatever you want to call them over there. And he's always out to help, particularly the elderly. And he's on top of it with stickers. He's on top of it with prices and bags, et cetera, et cetera. And he monitors all the equipment, the scrap metal, the bulk metal, the recycling. I've seen him crawl right inside these machines, somebody get jammed up and try to string them out. So he knows the equipment, and he knows the people. And you're not going to find a better person than him. And, can I just add one thing further? He asked me back a couple of months ago if he was going to lose his job. And I said, they're still negotiating, because I didn't feel it was my place to say one thing or the other. And he asked me the other day again, and I said, well, this job's going to be, as far as Cassell is gone, the job position's going to be gone. But would you be interested in applying for a, I think it's 30 hours?
We have it for 32.
Okay, 32? And he said, yeah, I'd be interested in applying for it. He says, does it, that mean it's going to be open 32 hours? I says, I don't think so. I think it's open the same hours, but maybe ways to do something else, come in early or come in late. So anyway, just want to say, excellent choice.
Well, we haven't made the choice yet.
No, well, I just want to put, I have an opportunity to put a good word in for the guy. Thank you.
And we have a motion, a second on Hunter Conley. Motion as Highway Equipment Operator effective April 4th.
Aye.
2022 through June.
Did we get a second on that?
We did.
Okay, good, thank you.
Mr. Escud. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you. Number seven, approve the 16th Annual Buddy Walk of Berkshire on Saturday, September 24th, 2022. Mr. Hutchinson.
I defer to our visitor to describe the event.
Well, thank you guys for having me. I really appreciate it. This is my actual first time at one of your town meetings. Usually, Aaron Robb just says, you know what, Chris, don't worry. They're going to say yes anyway, we'll take care of it. But I just wanted to let you know, for two years, we've done it virtually during the pandemic, and they're itching, itching to start again. I'm hoping this year we can go live. And I have Craneville already approved, and I did the paperwork for them, and I sent them my certificate for liability. So you guys are my next step to get approved, so that I could go and let the fire department, the police department know, and get the mass dock on board with the parade with the roof. We don't want to tie up traffic. That's why we're going to go up on the side streets. Once we cross over, I'll say that in a side. We're going to go back to Craneville that way, so we don't tie it up both ways. So basically, we're trying to keep to what we used to do. If we have food, we're going to probably, we use Subway before, so everything's all, you know, prepackaged, and we just hand everything out. We're going to do everything as safely as possible. And yeah, basically, I told the group that I was meeting with you tonight, and hopefully you'll approve me.
Sure. Any questions at all?
It's a great program. I always enjoy participating when I'm in town and whatnot, but it's a great program, and everybody does a great job, and it's nice to see it walk throughout community as well. I'd be in favor.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, we approve the 16th Annual Buddy Walk of Berkshire on Saturday, September 24th, 2022, pending consultation approval with the other entities.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion, a second, any discussion?
Is there a rain date?
No, rain or shine.
Okay, motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Hearing none, motion carries. Looking forward to it. Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Have a lovely night.
You too, thank you.
You too.
Number eight, approve the CRA road race on Sunday, May 1st, 2022. Allison.
Hi.
Hi, how are you?
Good, thank you very much for having me. This is the CRA's 45th Annual Road Race. And last year, we were able to hold it, but it wasn't in May. Due to COVID, we had to delay in August. So now we are back to the official May Day race again. It'll be May 1st, Sunday, it's at Nessus. It's a great family fun event. We have something for all ages, from the little kids running obstacles and popsicles and the splatter sprint, to adults running 5K, 10K, and there's also a walk. We have already sent letters to the police department and the fire department, the state, the Massachusetts. They're just waiting for approval from the town before they give us authorization. But we're using the same routes, the same 5K and 10K routes. They're certified, we've been using them for years. And let's see, is there anything else? We have about 200 participants, about 100 adults and 100 kids. We're thinking it's going to be bigger this year. Last year was kind of small because of COVID and because of the change in date. But we think it'll be back to normal again this year. If you have any questions for me?
Allison, I think you did miss the part where I'm the defending champion for my A-truths.
I'm sorry.
I was the only entered, or a person in my A-truth, so.
You're the 50th one. Yeah, that's right. All right, I'll run against Martha.
I was going to say, I hope you will come out and defend your title.
I'll make a motion, we approve the CRA road race on Sunday, May 1st, 2022.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Motion carries. And thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, absolutely looking forward to it.
Thank you, Allison.
Is there a motion to open as a rent control board?
Make a motion, we open as a rent control board.
Do a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Motion carries, but now opened as the rent control board. This is a complaint regarding maintenance on Victoria Village mobile home car. Mr. Hutchinson.
I got a phone call from Mr. Garvey, who reminded my office that there had been some activity a couple of years ago before I came, and that seems to have been slowed by COVID. And I believe there are additional issues, which Mr. Garvey is going to introduce to the board and perhaps request another site visit, and certainly attention to problems which seem not to be resolved through his interactions with the owner.
That's got to be, you know. Okay, real quick, you guys know it's been going, oh, the door guy. But it's been on 70, 80 years. When this project started, the septic tank. And when that began, I talked to Mr. Deek about, you know, what are you going to do when you dig everything up? I said, my driveway was a mess then. And he said, we will repair all driveways. Fine, that didn't happen. I'll just kind of speed it up. And then the project began, and it took six years, I think it was, for him to finally finish, which during the project, I spoke to him at least five times, several times, about my driveway. And all five times, he said he would take care of it, basically lying to me. And at the last one, the actual blacktop machine was parked in front of my house, and it drove away then. So apparently, I mean, I talked to him, same thing. I just get a lot, he's going to take care of it. And now, over the years, it's all mine. And I do have a handicapped person that comes to my house, who I have to carry through the mud to get to my house, which, that's not the whole thing. But this has just been going on and on. And he's responsible from the ground down. That's what his contract says, just like the septic tanks when we took them out. And unfortunately, when you gave him the rent increase, it's given you guys a folder with a lot of the septic tank areas and a lot of the homes are sinking. The ground is just sinking. And that's now happening in my house, and my house is actually tilting slightly. And in a weird way, I have another question about the plowing. Now, this year, unfortunately, the town plowed to the end of my driveway, or the end of yard, and left the snow back there in the street. Now, I'm not quite sure why, I've never plowed that way in 35 years I've lived there. And unfortunately, what does that all help? Right down into my yard, down into my driveway. And it also made my driveway a turnaround spot for the entire winter, because nobody could drive up the street. So that didn't help matters. And now I just really have a mess on my hands. And I don't think putting plywood down every year is the answer. So I would like it be addressed, at least looked at, and maybe I can go from there. I'm willing to, whatever you guys might think is the best course of action.
You said the town plowed down there?
Yeah, they didn't plow, I called them, and they said they had a new guy or something. And they left the snow right in the middle of the street. Instead of just going up to the turnaround, you know what I'm talking about? They left it like right at the end of my yard. I mean, I see a couple of people running into the snowbank, but that's because they won't pay any attention. But it's kind of odd, I don't know why they would do that.
Well, we can interpret that to be addressed easily.
What's that?
They said that could be addressed easily.
Yeah, well, I called the town, and we said it wouldn't happen. Who knows? It just kept happening, and I was like, I'm not going to keep pugging them about a snowbank, you know? But anyways, but that did, didn't help, because all the water from the snowbank got trucked down. So it kind of came into a little river up there. There you go.
When this issue came to the board, and I just recently started, I think it was in 19, Mr. Bishop and I did a site visit.
Yes, you did, yes, you did.
And nothing's changed since that time?
No, and there was, you took a picture of a hole, sinkhole in my yard, told me to put a stick in it.
Yeah.
It's still there. Yeah, he never, he lied to you guys. He didn't think anything, nothing, nothing at all. He didn't, I mean, you can go to a bunch of the mobile homes, and you'll see right where the septic tanks are, the ground's sinking, and all of them. Not all of them, but quite a few.
Does this fall under housing authority? I mean, we got rent control, what does this fall under? Does it fall under us?
And primarily, I mean, I'm not specifically addressing Mr. Garvey's problem, but traditionally, he more than half handle the problems up there, because they usually dealt with septic wells. But this case, it might not.
Well, it's a little more, just the whole, it just wasn't properly finished.
I was always under the impression, because the whole, was it Victoria Village?
Yeah.
Is private property. I didn't think the town plowed it.
Oh, you plowed Old Route 9. I don't live in the park, technically. I'm not on Old Route 9. I get plowed in by the town, I don't get any snow service.
The town plowed Old Route 9.
Right.
I know that. Some of that might not be familiar with us. And Deet, oh, I want to point out that there's a grammatical error in the old minutes regarding this situation. They spelled his name D-E-E-T. It's D-E.
D, that's what it focuses on.
Anyway, so the town plowed Old Route 9.
Right.
I'll pass your house.
Yeah.
And how they plowed it for, they went past your house?
Went up.
To the rear door.
And went back down. Now they got off, they stopped, they backed all the way down the road, and then come back again.
That's easily rectified.
Yeah.
The rest of the part, the whole terrace, I forgot the name of the other street.
The whole terrace is, that's technically my address, but that's the street next to me.
Yep.
I'm technically on Old, I'm not on terrace.
Deet plows?
He plows those two little roads between.
Yep, what about the one across?
And then the one down, down toward the river.
He allegedly stole some old sand and salt, all that.
Oh, that's awesome.
Yeah, allegedly, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah, yeah, it is a little screwy. He did put a, like, I can't even tell what street it was. He put a pole up for a street sign like 25 years ago. Never put the sign up, so there's a pole there.
But you are, but you are in his trailer park, though.
I'm in his park, I guess, technically. I wondered.
Were you paying rent?
Huh? I'm paying rent.
Okay.
Yeah, well, yeah, that's it. And that's the other thing, you know? I'm paying the same rent as the guy that had his driveway fixed, the road, you know, something like that. So it's good for one, it's good for the other, right? I think that person had taken the court. I'm not totally off on that, but, because she didn't know the rules. Because they just moved in here, in there last year, so. I don't know all about that one, but there's always something going on. Lot of complaints. But anyhow, I can't deal with all theirs, I'm just going to deal with mine.
So is our next step to call Mr. Deek and have him come here to respond to the complaint? Well.
Kind of already happened.
Yeah, he kind of already has a 19, or a 12. Should we refer this to the building inspector and to the health department to follow up on this, and then report back to us, so then we can call them in front when we have our, when we have the information we need?
Are you continuing to have issues with your septic system?
Not, no, not the septic, no. It did back up twice during the, that was a whole other story. He's supposed to pay for that. Tried to charge me for it, and then only did half the job, and then he wouldn't do the rest, so. I backed up twice in my house during the project. I ended up eating that, too.
But so there's no, there's no septic issue?
No, just where they dug the tanks up, the ground's sinking. So they're basically getting a hole where the tanks were, you had to dig all the old tanks out.
Right.
Come under the houses, and right in their yard, right where the bathrooms are in each house, basically.
Who inspected it the last time? Who went up there and looked at it?
I didn't see much of anybody looking at anything, to be honest with you. I mean, where I was, because I'm up at the dead end, so.
But I remember, I thought we had the building inspector.
The only people who came to my house was Bob and Joe Stokes. And that's it.
I'm talking way back when this whole thing first started.
Way back? I think that was like 2014.
When they were putting, started to put the septic tanks in, we had people up there. It must have been the building inspector was looking at it, the health department.
There was a lot of issues up there. I mean, they caught a tractor in the river and some kind of stuff.
I still would feel comfortable sending the building inspector and the health department up there to inspect.
Yeah, and if you want me to meet them up there, they'd have to show around, and be fine.
We could have a meeting on that, and then have Mr. Deek come back, that would be, that's where I.
Well, you can get the flu from.
What exactly are we asking them to look at?
Look through an inspection, I guess, and look around.
It's just basically a maintenance issue for the property. I mean, I paid quite a good chunk of change for a mud hole, basically.
What are the actual outstanding issues? Because this letter that I have is dated from 2019. Which ones are still occurring?
Well, the driveway, all the mud, the muddy, I mean, it's just some mud up there. It needs to be replaced or repaired. And now, the yard is sinking in even more than it was at my house, because I can actually feel at my house, I'm going to have to go under and jack it up. What I'm going to have to do.
I remember number three, who's the maintenance guy? It's Mr. Deek, I can't remember who. Start with a P, maybe? Paul? Yeah, I can't remember, but I specifically remember number three saying he was going to take care of that.
Oh, no, he actually always says. Well, I think they were leaving.
Then here you have number four, you said that was never addressed.
Was that still the case, never addressed?
They never addressed, a lot of them, all along, down there.
Well, no, the dumping at the end of the road?
Oh, yeah, they had to, because they dumped by the river.
They did take care of that?
That they did do, yeah.
Okay.
I believe you had the lady, came up, the fighter mad lady. She was up to my house, and she took care of all that.
Conservation commission?
Or conservation lady, yeah.
Yeah, it's in the minutes here.
Yeah, yeah, she took care of that, so. She came up a few times and checked again, too. She was pretty thorough. Yeah, there's just been a lot of things.
Mark, you might want to include a conservation commission in that visit.
Good point, John.
Yeah, I just wanted to meet, I know there was, as Mr. Garvey just said, a, oh. But that one.
Yeah, it's just, it's like banging my head into a wall, so.
I'll make a motion that we direct the town manager to have a member of the conservation commission, the health department, and the building inspector to come to site visit and report back to the, we report back to the select or the report on property.
If, just say, if they could have, Mr. Garvey could avail himself of this group visit, which is going to occur, and point out the problem, particularly on your property, because you're here.
Yeah, that'd be fine, you get a whole name. I'll make time, what, we got to do?
Is there a second on the motion for Mr. Schrute?
Second.
Motion, a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Motion carries. That's our plan for now.
Thanks for hearing me out.
Thanks for bringing it back to us.
Well, there's totally a lot of things.
Yeah.
All by the wayside. Appreciate it.
Motion to close as a rent control board?
So, you guys got a second.
Motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, close?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Hearing none, motion carries. FY23 budgets, the budget 244, sealer of weights and measures.
We have one budget that was not appeared earlier that we have to approve. It's level funded, it's the sealer of weights and measures, a stipend that is typically now granted to the building inspector for the extra training and activities as a sealer of weights and measures. TA? Thank you very much.
Disposition on Barnum Property continues.
Just here in case there's an update, Mr. Boyle had asked, had suggested that there might be additional information.
Yeah, he emailed it to myself, because after this was brought up, I inquired to a Gina Smith, APR program planner. And she said that it was definitely a solution in his site. And Thea Butter, who was considering acquiring the section of Windsor so the whole track could be reunited under one APR, is just lining up the legal procedures that purchase and sale agreement should be available shortly, and then we can take it from there.
And then, if this select were voted to sell the property, I would go ahead and instruct the town treasurer to go through the auction that's necessary in order to sell the property from our end.
Tom, if. we need, I saw the article in the town meeting, we need permission to sell it. I'm not sure we do, or maybe we had it before. Anybody remember?
I, I don't remember that, but I do remember, obviously, John, that we had voted to sell it before, so.
So, I guess if we have to get new permission from the town meeting to sell it, does that mean that the stipulations or conditions we put out in the sale two years ago, February, are null and void?
Well, the, it's, it's a yes or no vote from the town, the way I have it set up. It's the town.
Yeah, okay.
Authorizing the select board to sell or lease the property. So that, that's, that's open ended.
Okay, so then you go back to the board, the board would decide if they want to set a minimum price, or et cetera, et cetera. I mean, thank you. Answer my question.
Uh, that's my understanding.
Yep.
We'll, of course, have town council in our backseat the whole way.
Probably gonna need him at this meeting then.
Could.
Hey, here we go.
Any other questions on the Barden property? So no action needed from one? Rule number twelve, approve one hundred and forty-five thousand dollars of ARPA fund for a water system as an area through the fire and water district as revenue replacement funds. Can you start this?
We apparently left this off the list of items when we were having you redesignate the ARPA spending under revenue replacement funds. Because the final rule came out, we have much more flexibility in how we spend the money, and it's much simpler reporting if we do all of it as revenue replacement. So I would ask you to approve the, the funding mechanism of what was already voted for the water systems engineering. We did that originally under a different title, and if we could do it under revenue replacement, it would simplify things tremendously.
Let me make a motion, we approve one hundred and forty-five thousand dollars of ARPA fund for water system engineering through the fire and water district as revenue replacement funds.
Do you have a second?
One second.
Motion a second, any discussion? Hear none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Number thirteen, approve the town meeting warrant. We'll discuss motions and explanations documents.
Yes, we're getting much closer to a final document. We do not yet have a final document, unfortunately. I do have some updates for you on the warrant, though. I can report that it appears not necessary to meet next week on an off week, but we can do the final signing on Monday, April eleventh, when we should have, have it printed out on special paper and all that sort of thing, so. A few updates. First, in general, the language, I, I did get a response from town council not before I had sent out what you have in front of you. So, um, that document has been updated, cleaned up, made more precise, and also more flexible. The language is consistent from article to article, and it's, it's really in much better shape than what you have in front of you. Just a note, Article ten, which is the transfer to the reserve fund for the current fiscal year, we'll probably be able to pass over that article. I, I don't believe the finance committee is going to exceed their sixty-five thousand dollar limit, so that we should be able to pass over that. Also, Article thirteen, bills from prior year, we'll probably be able to pass over that. We have no, we currently have no bills from the, before July first, twenty twenty-one, and I really hope we don't get any. It would be an extremely late bill if we had, if it came in ten months late. That said, having it on is a bit of a safety measure in case something does come in. For Article fifteen, the planning board will deliberate changes to the drive-through bylaw tomorrow evening. So after tomorrow, they will either have decided pro or con on language for a drive-through bylaw, and any changes to that. In Article sixteen, the wetlands bylaw, town council has indicated some discomfort with one clause that, that was reviewed by their, their special conservation commission lawyer, but our general lawyer is concerned about one clause, so I hope to be working with him and the chair of the conservation commission and the town planner to address his concerns about that one clause. It has to do with emergency work.
Tom, if we, at eleven there, are you looking for this thing to be totally finalized so we can sign it?
Or yes.
So, but on that night, the change that you mentioned, this question about the wetlands thing, will we be able to change that, that, that tonight before we sign it?
Oh, it, it, I would have to have it changed before it came to you.
Okay, so this would be different?
Yes, yeah, and, and that's, um, that's a, a change. Right now, the way it's written, it requires an after-the-fact permit to be filed for the emergency work. And it doesn't say what kind of a permit, and our town council is suggesting pretty strenuously that it not be a notice of intent. So that's, that's something to consider. It's, it's, you know, emergency work is done when, when a road washes out next to a river and you need to do something right away. And, you know, quite clearly, um, it's a situation where the, the road has to be fixed, and whatever needs to be done in order to get that road to be fixed has to be done. And so the request to file a permit for the work done afterwards is a little problematic. Especially, you know, with, it says in, and remediation can be ordered after the, after the fix. And I, I, I think the feeling is that emergency work is, there, there is an emergency exemption for a reason, and that is the work has to be done. And, uh, I, I just have to get the parties in the, on the, on the phone together to talk about the intent and, and what the, what that permit in the process would look like. I, I, you know. So, anyway, that's.
So, work its way through.
That, that's, that's one little, little.
Yeah.
Quickie part. For Article sixteen, the Barden land sale release article needs a more specific location stated in the warrant article. I'm working with town council on that. There are several parcels involved. Article nineteen, which is the one deauthorizing borrowing for a number of items, that, that's gonna be withdrawn at Sammy's request. Sandy had requested that article, and the numbers that we have available are not the best numbers for that purpose. So we're, we'll cover that later. It's not a major item.
Tom, you just backtrack, go back to the Barden property sale thing, information?
Yeah.
I have all the information regarding the parcels numbers, the map number, et cetera, et cetera, the valuation number?
Yeah, I, I have those as well, and I'm, I'm working with town council on how to present that in the, in the article.
The way I understand it, there's three parcels?
Yes, three parcels of, absolutely. And, so, yeah, and the, the same question for the location goes for Article twenty-two. One, one is the permission to say or lease. If, if the select board decides to sell, then the whole bit about having a town forest is, will be passed over. But if it's not, then it has to be delineated. That's all. Uh, and I've already mentioned a bit about the town per, indicating that April eleventh would be a good date to sign the warrant. So that's all I have on the warrant at this point. So with those changes, possible changes, it will be good to go in two weeks.
Great, great work.
I'm also working on the, the motions and explanations document, still filling in figures for that. There's, there's a little bit more, more slack with that, so I expect to have something final, also by April eleventh.
I know how to do that. Excuse me, Article twenty-eight.
That's the resolution?
Uh, no, I think that's the, uh, uh, Water Street.
Yeah.
Uh, is there any information or decision or recommendation by the planning board?
It was not taken to the planning board.
Oh, it's strictly by petition?
Yes. It, it may be deficient in some aspects.
It usually are. So, at the town meeting, they'll be responsible for their own motion. Well, it'll be a discussion.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. Yeah, it was both petition, I forget, yeah.
Yeah. So that's all I have on that.
Great, thank you. Uh, next is just a quick update on the roundabout. I think everybody's familiar with the roundabout proposed by Mass DOT on self domain. Almost a year, year and a half ago, so. I mentioned it briefly last week, but I wanted formally bring it back on this agenda and just share that Mass DOT has decided not to move forward with the roundabout. They are going to have a countywide project on updating intersections with better signaling, and will be on that list, and once they get that contract straight away, then we'll have more of a, a date of when we could expect that work to occur in Maine itself. But a couple of things I just want to say, I just want to say thanks to the community for coming out and sharing your opinions, but also a very big thank you to Mass DOT for listening to the community and, and reassessing that project and making that determination, so. Good work across the board, and, you know, certainly look forward to those signals to be updated when the time, time is right on that, on that project, so. So that's all I have.
So, just a quick question there.
Sure.
In addition to the signalization, are they gonna do any, like, curb adjustments?
Yeah, it was that second proposal they had, with the signaling, you know, with the curbs and things.
I wonder if they're gonna change that. It was, both plans had a different approach, as you came from the west and approached. Who's the dying tree? A different kind of ramp down, so as traffic wouldn't get backed up there.
Yeah.
I wonder if that's still in.
And add, like, the bike lanes and things of that nature, yeah, yeah. It's that second proposal, is my, my understanding.
Yep.
They'll certainly come back and do, you know, public care and everything on that design, et cetera, when they're ready. So there's no further questions on that, we can just, we can move to the discussion of town finances. The excess levy capacity, the average tax bill and tax rate?
Yes, I have my, the latest version of my planning document here. It's fairly complete. I can't guarantee that it's absolutely complete, but it's, it's very close. The things that I haven't entered up on here are some of the free cash items, so it would not be affecting the, the reasonable, the, the levy, the tax. So, the way it looks now is that the excess levy capacity after town meeting would be somewhere very close to one million twenty-three thousand seventy-three dollars. That is a, pretty close to three hundred thousand dollars less than we have now, but we, it's still a very, very healthy excess levy capacity. There are towns out there with a few thousand dollars that they, that they have to, to play with, so. That's, that's the excess levy capacity figure. The excess, the average tax bill, which is much more important to most people than the tax rate, is slated to be forty-seven hundred forty-seven dollars, which is a rise of, it's a rise from four thousand six hundred eighty dollars. It's going up about sixty-seven dollars. And the tax rate, if the valuation of the property were the same this year as it was last year, the tax rate would rise thirty cents from twenty dollars and eighty-four cents to twenty-one dollars fourteen cents. That said, I understand the valuation is gonna go up considerably, which means the tax rate will probably drop to substantially below twenty dollars. And, and, you know, because it's the valuation going up that makes the tax rate go down, the average tax bill will still be going up, you know, roughly sixty-seven dollars. With, with the current budget as I have it.
Thank you, Brad.
All figures subject to amendment.
Yeah. How much money do you anticipate using free cash to depress the tax rate?
Where, I'm still just counting on the, the, the normal two hundred thousand dollar article to cover the, the dispatchers in case the grant doesn't come through, which is my understanding of the typical way that Dalton has approached that. We, we, we tax that, but we give back in free cash.
I understand.
Let me get the grant.
Based on how much free cash we have, and I don't know that figure, is possible always to use more to depress the tax rate?
Uh, yes, and it's a really bad idea financially, because what ends up happening is unless you cut the budget by that amount, then the following year, you not only have to make up what you did with tax, but you have to add any new spending for the following year. So you get kind of a double plan. If you, if you use free cash to lower the tax rate and you cut the budget by that amount the following year, then that's, then that's a wash. But otherwise, you're, you're constantly chasing after the, the spending, trying to use the free cash against it, so. That's typically not a recommended course, and I understand the chair of the finance committee checked in with the former chair of the finance committee about that strategy and received that same answer, so.
But a lot has to do with actually, how much free cash we have as opposed to the prior year. Maybe we have an excessive amount, so using extra to depress the tax rate would be a good situation, because it wouldn't affect the budget you process the next year.
Uh, what you want to do is cut the budget. That, that, that's, that's really the way to lower free cash over time. And there are various departments, and of course, each of them have sufficient amounts so that they're unlikely to require a special town meeting, you know, if they come to their, come to their limit, so that's, that's a calculation that's made every year. And a typical free cash amount is about five percent of the town budget, and I don't have that figure with me right now, but a free cash figure of five percent of the town budget is, three to five, is what's considered good practice by department recognition.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Thank you for bringing that information, Steve, and that was very helpful. Tom Mandrill update, number sixteen.
Uh, yes, well, most of my work over the past week has been settling various items included on the town meeting warrant, as covered earlier. Chief Strout, Chair Giver, and I attended a grant awarding ceremony for regionalization and efficiency grants last Thursday in Butler, better known as the other side of Sheldon Falls. We were accompanied by the Hinsdale chief of police and their town administrator. We applied for the grant at the request of Hinsdale, who would expect to lose their chief soon due to retirement and does not expect to be able to fully fund an adequate force after the Police Reform Act. The challenge will be getting a good consultant to plan the details of such a transition, as well as hold sufficient community meetings for residents of both towns to be satisfied with the plan. So we got the grant, now we have to do the work. I have filed an additional form which could garner some more money from the multi-state opioid settlement. You may recall what the funds could be used to support the chief's deer program in the schools. You may recall what the funds could be used to support the chief's deer program in schools. We have no idea how much we might get, um, but possibility of some money. So I filed for it originally, remember, a few months ago. And now there, there's, uh, a very short window to, uh, file for potentially some additional funds. So I did that. Still no indication of what the settlement could really mean financially. Uh, I have been working with my assistant to set up a network, she's been working with me, actually, to set up a network of social service providers so that some of the more difficult public health issues in town may be managed with appropriate professional advice and action. These include cases of hoarding, substandard housing, sometimes spilling over into environmental issues, et cetera. It is based on something I read in the paper about the Pittsfield Pub, where they bring together a number of people from, from different agencies in order to try to solve problems.
Great idea.
And we had two responses to the request for proposals for assessing services with a three-year contract offered. The apparent winner was Patriot Properties due to their scope being a better fit for the town's needs. I'm still in communication with the other applicant. But the, uh, two assessors and I who reviewed the proposals thought that the Patriot Properties was a better fit. That's it?
Great, thank you. Any questions for Tom Manager? Here none? Uh, moving to seventeen, future agenda items?
I'd like to put on the, uh, Dalton Carnival for the next one. Cause that road. Now, I'll reach out to, I'll reach out to Dan Downer. What's the date of our next meeting?
Eleven.
Eleven, April eleven. Any additional future agenda items? Okay, here none. Any items not anticipated forty-eight hours before the meeting? Here none. Any remarks of the select board? Here none. Uh, going to the announcements. Uh, the tax collector and assessive office have moved from Town Hall across the street to the old Berkshire Bank Building at four eighty-eight Main Street. You can continue to use the drop boxes located outside of the Town Hall for any payments or you can stop over to their new location. The spring two thousand twenty-two household hazardous waste day will take place on Saturday, May fourteenth, from nine AM to one PM at the Lee wastewater treatment plant. Pre-registration for this event is required. Please visit Dalton Town website for more details. And I forgot one select board announcement, if you forgive me. Um, just for our audience at home, um, at Wakona High School, they have a play, Oliver, uh, on April, Friday is, I think, April eighth and then Saturday is April ninth. So it's gonna be the first play in the new Wakona auditorium. So it should be a, a really good event. The Dalton Police Department is reminding the citizens of Dalton of the Winter Park Again, which is in effect from November fifteenth, twenty twenty-one through April fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. There's no park on streets between one AM to six AM. Uh, the following committees have vacancies and are looking for volunteers. The eighty-eight committee, the beautification commission, the Dalton Cable Advisory Committee, Dalton Green Committee, the Finance Committee, Steel and Water Management Commission, and Waste Management and Recycle Committee. If interested, please reach out to the town manager's office by calling four one three six eight four six one one one, extension two oh two. The next meeting is scheduled to place, to take place on Monday, April eleventh, twenty twenty-two, at seven PM at the Sealy Center, with an option for zoom participation. I think I have a motion to go, we need executive session tonight?
We did not.
We did not? Okay.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Adjourn.
Motion is second, any discussion? Here none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. And good night, Dalton. Thank you.